Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's October 17th, 2017. It's 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Valerie Ramey, Director of Child Evangelism Fellowship, to lead us in the implication, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by Councilperson Tony Mobley. All rise, please.
I have to read my prayer. Would you all pray with me? Bow your heads. Thank you. Dear Lord, our wise and loving Father, thank you, everyone that is here tonight, and for your many blessings of life, health, the calling that you've placed on our lives. Thank you also for the abilities that you've given us to be involved in useful work and the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for your provisions, dear Lord. Thank you for friendships. Thank you for loving us and for your boundless grace. You tell us in your word, in the Book of Romans, Chapter 13, about government, and to obey it, since you are the one who established it, and it's for the purpose to promote peace, order, and justice. So I lift up our Mayor Hewlett to you tonight. I lift up each level of city officials, and in particular for each council member represented here tonight. Please grant them in this meeting the wisdom to govern, even if there are conflicting issues and concerns. Please grant them the sense of welfare and true needs of the citizens of Granbury. Lord, please keep a keen thirst in them for justice and righteousness. Grant them confidence in what is good and fitting. Grant them the ability to work together, even when there is honest disagreement. And, Lord, finally, grant personal peace in their lives and joy in their work. So I lift up this evening's agenda to you, Lord. Please give an assurance of what would be pleasing to you, and of what would benefit those who live and work in our beloved city of Granbury. Thank you, dear Lord, for the privilege to pray this evening, in the matchless, mighty name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice sore. And now the Texas pledge. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one indivisible.
First, our first item in business today is the consent agenda. Council, we've got a pretty lengthy one here. First thing being consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2017's regular meeting. Second item was consider approving a master in governmental cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Granbury and the national and government purchasing alliance company, which was to update current contracts and helps us be able to do that in advance because it's pre-approved. The third being consider adopting orders 1771, amending the budget of the general fund, airport fund, and the tourism fund for fiscal year 2016-2017. Basically, some housekeeping there. Consider approving the purchase of 41 Harris XL 2OP multi-band portable radios from the First Choice Communications and Security Solutions in the amount of $124.997.60, which was also budgeted. Number five, consider awarding bid number 167505 for the purchase of water treatment chemicals to Eagle Lab Incorporated and Penagag Southwest Incorporated. Budgeted item there. Also to consider, item number six, consider approving Hibs and Todd to provide the city of Granbury with a wastewater system study. And number seven is to consider awarding a public management corporation the grant administration contract for the 2017 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application and Project Administration. And number eight, to consider awarding Strand the engineering contract for the 2017 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application and Project Engineering. And by the way, the Strand was the only one, or I think the only one, that had the natural gas experience. So, council, you've had an opportunity to read over the consent agenda and all those items at this time. Are there any changes to the consent agenda, corrections, or is there any of those items that you'd like to pull off the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
Items in seven and eight on mine don't have any information about what that is, or what it does, or how much, or when, or why. So I'd like an explanation of what those are.
Do it. Councilperson Parsons, it is going to executive session. We can pull these off there, but we can get...
We're going to discuss them in executive session?
Yes, sir.
Well, why don't we move them off and vote on them then, after session?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move seven and eight off until further review. Council, any more items that you'd like to pull off the consent agenda, or to make changes If not, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item number seven and eight.
So moved.
I have a motion, but Councilman Mobley? For a second.
Second.
I got a second, but Councilman Parsons? Any more discussion on the consent agenda, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda, less seven, item seven and eight, is approved. Because we're not going to move them to the deliberation agenda at this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to the deliberation agenda. That first item is item number nine. It's a public hearing and consider approving a request of Liberty G and C Land Corporation. Scott, I'm going to call upon you to give us some staff report on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request from the applicant who is seeking to plumbary plat the property that's located roughly north of Waters Edge and south of Catalina Bay 2. Subject site is currently zoned patio home. The plumbary plat seeks to plat out lots that are consistent with patio home type development. You can see the plumbary plat on your screen. That's also included in your agenda packet. Of particular note, some of the design standards have since been enhanced from the base patio home standards, and I'll highlight a few of those. The south lots adjoining the Cliff Swallow residential lots to the south are platted out as 60-foot wide instead of the required 50-foot wide. 60-foot wide meets our width requirements of single-family residential R7. So they're a little bit wider, 10-foot wider lots than is required in patio homes. The other thing that you see in Note 16 that's highlighted is that those lots will be restricted to one story, and the developer chose to do that for adjacency issues to those adjoining single-family homes to the south. So as a part of this plumbary plat application, you'll notice on the plat that there's one means of general ingress egress on a public street to Waters Edge Drive. That drive has been enhanced as a boulevard-type template with a kind of a separated median in between the two for ingress egress into the subdivision. We have two variances that are tied to this plat application. You have a memorandum from your city engineer that's included in your agenda packet as well. First and foremost is a variance to 3.1N to not provide a point of access for each, in each direction, and for each 50 lots. There are 105 lots in this proposed development. By ordinance, that requires, once you're over 100, that requires a third access point. And again, what's being proposed on the plumbary plat is that boulevard entrance to Waters Edge Drive. And you can see a connection point to the north, to the adjoining subdivision to the north, and I will yield to the developer and his engineer to go into a little more detail on the design there. Secondly, we have a variance to 3.3A to modify the utility easement requirements to not conflict with the building setback requirements. Our patio home building footprint placement on the lot is 8 inches on one side, 10 feet on the other. Our subdivision ordinance requires two parallel 5-foot utility easement dedications on the side lot line. So this is nothing more than doing away with the 5-foot utility easement on the 8-inch placement side to get in line with the subdivision ordinance requirements. Again, you have a memorandum from your city engineer recommending, if I may zoom in a little closer here, recommending conditional approval of the variances to 3.1N to not provide that point of access in each general direction, north, south, east, and west, and for one entrance for 50 lots. The approval, along the second sentence, approval is conditioned upon the applicant obtaining permission for constructing a paved roadway to connect to Catalina Park Lane between Highland Park Bay subdivision and Catalina Bay subdivision, creating a continuous paved surface for emergency access only, as described in the variance application submitted by the applicant, and as depicted on the plumbary plat and engineering plans submitted as a part of the plumbary plat supplemental. And then he also recommended approval of the variance to 3.3A to modify the utility easement requirements to not conflict with the building setback for the patio home zoning classification. This is a shot of that stub street that's actually looking south from Catalina Bay. You can see the fence. The paved surface is not built all the way to the poppy line. The Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on this in great detail, about 30 or 40 minutes, and opened up a public hearing. They, by a vote of 3 As and 2 Nays, recommended approval of the variances as recommended by the engineer with a modification to 3.1N, that the emergency exit or gate to Catalina Bay be used in both directions. They wanted to make sure that both subdivisions can have ample opportunity to get out, in and out during emergency situations. And then after the vote on the variances, by a vote of 3 to 2, 3 As, 2 Nays, they went on to the plat application, and that was a similar vote, 3 As, 2 Nays. So, Mayor, council, that's your report, P and Z last night. It comes to you with a recommendation of 3 As, 2 Nays. I know we have the applicant's engineer in the audience, Mr. Jordan Bishop, and our city engineer, Mr. Chris Hay, as well.
Okay, thank you, Scott. I think Chris wants to add a little more to that, if you could, please.
I would like to add that the entrance that's between the sewer plant and Catalina Bay is designed to be two 10-foot lane road on both sides of that center median. So you'd have a four-lane road going into that subdivision, and that provides plenty of egress for emergency vehicles, and we don't have an issue with that at all. In addition, I would say that there's this contingency thing about the neighbors complying with something he's trying to do, and I think that it would be unfair to shackle any person with a negotiation that's required to be able to get a plat from somebody else. And he has attempted to work with those property owners and has not been successful in getting them to agree to allow that gate to be a two-way access, even for emergency persons. We received an email yesterday from someone at Catalina on their board and reaffirmed that they do not have an agreement for that. And while it's in the best interest of Catalina and this subdivision to have that egress, I don't think that you should put that as a condition to hold him back from being able to move forward. That's my two cents worth. I think that good effort has been experienced from both parties to try to make something happen, and it was promised early on, and then it was withdrawn. So I think that we need to consider that as we move forward, and I would urge you, as I said in my email earlier, to, if you do approve this variance, to do it without any conditions.
Is that four-lane, has it got a median in between it, or is it four-lane?
Yes.
I'd like to defer to the engineer on the design.
Chris is saying yes, but go ahead and introduce yourself so we got it on record there, if you would, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jordan Bishop. I'm with Jordan Engineering. I am the civil engineer representing the applicant on this property. To answer your question, yes, sir. The section we are going with at that entrance is what your standards call a collector, C4U, to be precise. It's a four-lane divided roadway, two 11-foot lanes on either side of a 6-foot median. And yes, we are proposing, or amenable to, a second point of emergency access to the north, not something that would be open to everyday traffic, but gated and locked and only used in emergency situations. I will point out, when we first started looking at this property, there are two easements to the south on the Waters Edge property. However, through discussions with that neighborhood, a roadway connection was not something that was desired there. And so through the attempt of the extra-wide entrance and the emergency access to the north has been our attempt to come to some level of agreement on this access situation.
Good, thank you. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we've got several people that have signed up to speak on this item, so I'm going to just call upon those folks right now. Our first one is Richard Winters.
I'll have to draw up my list.
Okay, Richard, passing. Our next speaker is Bibi French. Steve Gerhart.
(laughing).
Come on, Steve.
I'm Steve Gerhart. I live at 2222 River Road. It's the last house there in Waters Edge. It's the one on the water that sides the property that's being discussed. I just want to give you a little background. Over the last year, I know our homeowners association in Waters Edge has really put in a lot of time and effort on this, and I feel that what is being presented is probably as good as it's going to get. I mean, everybody wants bigger houses and bigger lots, but, you know, in reality, that ain't going to happen. I'm also the lot that they talked about going through, and it wasn't feasible. For one thing, it was going to tear up most of my yard. It was going to take out a tree. It was going to take out a city power box. It was a water well there in one of the neighbors that probably would have had to go. I think with some of those kind of issues, our homeowners association said, hey, take a look at that Catalina one. It's a road. There's, as Scott was calling it, a stub, I think. It's a road. It was there. It's been there for a long time. I think it was there before some of those houses were even built, and it looked like it was the developers' plan who also developed Catalina to put that road in intentionally to go into that new development that we're talking about tonight. It makes good sense, and I think from what I'm hearing, that most of the people up there sound to be, seem to be agreeing with that, that it goes through that Catalina. I mean, again, I can understand the Catalina people's concern. Nobody wants anything that they don't have to. But if you look at the fact that that thing will be locked, last night's planning and zoning, they were talking about a swinging gate that could be accessed from either direction. It wouldn't even really change anything for those homeowners on that street unless there was an emergency where they were trying to get through there. So I recommend that you approve it. The other thing was the age limit, 55, came up last night, and there was some of the questions on P and Z about, hey, why are some of these homes restricted 55? And I think the answer from the contractor or the engineer was that that was a negotiated deal or a thing that some of the people in Waters Edge, including me, were kind of like, hey, we'd like to keep the neighborhood from becoming a rental market over there with smaller homes and patio. So that was, you know, kind of a compromise that the developer put into it, too. From our point of view, from Waters Edge, and I'm not the Waters Edge guy, but it looks like, you know, there's been a lot of compromising and a lot of understanding. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speaker that has signed up is Robin Garner. That's about the only time I get to see all my neighbors.
Once you get together with our neighborhood.
Thank you.
I have been attending some of the meetings that have been going on, and I just wanted to...
Robin, go ahead and introduce yourself and where you live at and stuff.
Robin Garner, and I live on Cliff Swallow. I know most of you from neighborhoods and neighbors that I really care about a lot and have met so many people in the one year that I've been here. I moved to Cliff Swallow and did not know that there was going to be, rather than a home, a possible entrance and exit, and I'm very relieved at this point that it looks like this has been resolved. And I just want to add that the neighbors and the people in Cliff Swallow and Waters Edge work very hard to maintain quality homes, and we moved there because we like the quiet and we like the peaceful neighborhood. Having lived in Dallas and Fort Worth, it's just a very nice neighborhood, and I want to keep it that way. So with the resolutions and the variances, I feel very comfortable about what's going in. I hope that these things will be voted and enforced, and that that will not become, that lot will not become an entrance-exit for safety reasons, noise, and all the other things that come with the volume of people coming in and out. I was concerned about safety. I was concerned about the neighbors, and also about quality, and hopefully those things have been resolved with the new plans that I see going on now. So with that, I'm in agreement. I do hope that all of these things, especially the one-story homes along Cliff Swallow, will continue to be enforced. We go to neighbors' houses there on Cliff Swallow, and they have pools and TVs, and we have a good time back there, but we don't want people, you know, looking in and, you know, invading that space. And I think that for emergency reasons, I also agree. We talked at one point about fences and the possibility of having fences that would be available to kind of keep some privacy for those people who had, you know, that side and our side as well. So those were my concerns and all my neighbors, and I think that we've worked real hard, and I appreciate the hard work that's gone on to make these things come into place, and I feel very good about that. So I just wanted to mention that. And I will stop the, it's been a real, I guess, an issue for many people and a concern, and we just spent five days with people looking for homes in Catalina Bay, the island, Waters Edge, and Harbor Lakes, and they came from Colorado, and they want land, and they would not even consider something that was this small. And the neighborhoods that are here are good and quality homes, and I hope that's maintained. So for the better of Granbury, I appreciate what's going on, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Robin. There are all the folks that had signed up. Is there any, is there any folks out there that wish to speak on this issue at this time? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any concerns or questions to, I'm sorry, I have one? Speak up, Sherry, come on. I don't need it. I know who it is. Sherry Reynolds.
Thank you. Tenno Six, Cliff Swallow. It's my understanding that we might get a wood fence. I'm hoping not, because that becomes a fire problem. And I was hoping of something like something solid, like a stone fence or brick fence, but I think that would be more appropriate. And as of this past weekend, I am not aware that Catalina Bay is going to give any part into the emergency opening. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Sherry.
Can I ask her a question, ma'am?
Sure. Sherry?
I'm sorry. I misunderstood something. Did you say what happened in Catalina Bay this weekend?
I heard that they had agreed, the board did agree not to give in to that road to Nowhere.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other people who would like to speak on this item that have not signed up? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Council, do you have any questions or concern for the engineer or Scott?
Mayor, I...
Councilman Allen.
Thank you, sir. Just for the record, I own property, lots run on the other side of the fence here. I do not own any part of this subdivision that we're talking about. I have no idea if I ever build a house over there or not. Possibility, yes. I hope to build all over Granbury. But if y'all would feel better, if the council, the attorney thinks I should step down, I will.
I'm okay with you sitting up here.
Thank you.
I mean, council?
The decision lies with you. If you feel like you need to...
If you feel like you want to stay here, then you do it.
I have no problem.
I live right across from it, too.
Mayor?
Councilman, council.
Is the city engineer here, I believe?
Yes.
Scott, would you go ahead and pull that back up on that recommendation by the city Okay, as far as the city engineer's side of this, what's being proposed, or what's being recommended by staff, is to go from three entrances of some sort to one?
It would be one main entrance with, as the applicant submitted, was an emergency, excuse me, emergency access point to Catalina Bay. However, they did upgrade that one main entrance to a collector, as the applicant's engineer referenced, a standard collector street. The city ordinance requires two access points from the subdivision to a collector or thoroughfare, and with the extension of that collector entrance all the way to the intersection of the two main roads, that in effect, in a way, serves as an adequate access point to the subdivision.
So you're good with what's being proposed by the...
Yes, and I'll clarify that conditional variance to 3.1N was strictly because the applicant submitted a plan, plans to construct, construct a roadway tying into Catalina Bay. And since that is not, to my knowledge, a city street, we could not give that approval without a separate agreement.
So you're looking for that second access point?
That conditional variance is strictly there because the applicant submitted it as such. We, and the DRC, the Fire Marshal, the other entities reviewing that, or staff, staff members reviewing this plat along with me, play into that decision as well. I can't speak for what they would require on that entrance, but as far as my point of view for traffic circulation, that main entrance is adequate.
Okay, well, my concern would be public safety. Would you weigh in on that?
I think it would be a benefit to both subdivisions to have that access point. However, at this point, that is outside of the city's hands in being able to approve that or enforce them to have that. So the conditional variance, I think, outlines that. If they can, as their proposal submits, they need approval to do that. That would be up to them to be able to provide that or not. up to them to be able to provide that or not, the applicant.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
You got something you want to say on that one? As you've already said? Okay. Counselperson Myers?
I think Ms. Counselperson Couch answered one of the questions about public safety. Because I, I, I think I recall originally the subdivision was going to have about ninety-five homes. But now we're at a hundred and five. Is that correct? Hundred and four?
One oh five.
One oh five. It didn't look like any additional homes went on Cliff Swallow, so the additional homes, did they go lakefront? That's my question.
Who you asking this to?
Engineer or the developer?
Um, the previous plans allocated, uh, an access point to the south, to Water's Edge, to line up with what we perceived as an access easement, uh, coming from their property. Uh, through the process of this revised layout, when we did away with that connection, uh, the additional lots came on that side.
Okay. So where they were going to have the-
Where we were going to have a public road.
Egresses. Right.
Since there was no desire for a road, they have now become lots. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Second question is the homeowner's concerns regarding the fence. And I know we met with them, um, about the concerns about the height of the fence, being consistent back there where if they go into their backyards, um, these fences are going to still maintain some of their privacy. How will that, because of that land grade back there, how will that look?
What we have on the, the common property line between Water's Edge and, and this subject property is an existing fifteen-foot easement onto our property. We are proposing an additional fifteen-foot utility easement, basically giving a thirty-foot, I'll call it a green space, but i- it's easement. It'll be sodded, it'll be grassed, uh, you know, if this development occurs. I think what that gives us the opportunity to do is to place that fence thirty foot from, you know, into our property, from the Water's Edge property. Uh, this goes to something we discussed last night at P and Z about double fences. Y- you get two fences right up against each other, three foot apart, five foot apart. You create a no man's land that becomes difficult to maintain. Who's going to mow it? It grows up.
That's my question. So if you have that gap, who's going to maintain?
Well, we have thirty feet, which is more than adequate to get any sort of, you know, mowing, lawnmower into. Uh, down towards the lake, we have a common area easement, or a common area lot that would provide a great access point for maintenance equipment to get in behind or in between these two fences and maintain that, that thirty-foot space. So I believe we're set up nicely to not create an undesirable five-foot space of high weeds. You know, thirty foot is more than manageable to maintain. It keeps that fence right off of the Water's Edge property and still provides the fence. I, I think at the moment, the applicant, uh, is understanding that a six-foot cedar fence i- is what would go there. If the material, the height, is something that we need to work through, as we go towards a final plat, we're more than willing to define those details, you know, exactly before we vote on the final plat.
Will there be a HOA association that collects dues for lawn maintenance?
There will be an HOA.
Because I don't want those calls every six weeks saying they're not mowing back there.
I, I understand. And I, I don't claim to know the ins and outs of an HOA. I, I know that there will be an HOA. Um, and again, if that is a certain detail that we need to have written into the bylaws of that HOA, um, I, I feel that we can do that before we get to the final plat stage.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions or concerns on this issue?
Mayor, I have another question.
Councilman Couch.
For the city engineer. So what were your discussions with the Fire Marshal on this?
Um, it's, it's been my understanding that, that in, throughout DRC, that they wanted that second access point, um, to Catalina Bay as an emergency access point.
Is that working fast?
I can tell you, they worked for me, and we've talked about this, and the, the Boulevard solves that problem. It's divided, it's supposed to be a minimum of twenty foot on both sides of that median, and it solves that access problem. If there's, if there's a wreck, we can still get in. If there's some kind of disaster ongoing, it's not going to be a head-on collision, so it's not going to block off the whole road. And I've, I've talked to those guys, and we understand this. So they may not be here. Is Jim here?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but they've, they're okay with this new design, Fire Marshal?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Councilman Allen.
I, first of all, I know Ms. Myers has worked with Water's Edge people and also developer, I think, on, on this, uh, project for a little bit. Uh, I kind of stayed out of it because they, they own property there. But, uh, we've got a hundred and twenty houses in Catalina Bay. We've got one entrance, one entrance. And I talked to the president. I talked to John Hall's company today. Uh, they're not going to give it to us, uh, the way I understand it. Or give it to them, I should say, not to the city. And I agree with, with Water's Edge people. I think the developer's done everything he could to get this approved. He's gave in a lot. Everybody's not going to get everything. They won't when you're doing a deal like this. There's always going to be something there that somebody else wants a little bit more of. But I think we should go forward with it and get this thing going we need in Granbury.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I would echo what, uh, Mr. Allen said. I mean, we've seen many renditions of this project. I think you guys have come a long way. I know you had a lot of opposition in the, in the past, and it appears that, you know, at some point, we all have to be neighbors and shake hands and, and live with what we have. Uh, I drove by the property every time this came up. Uh, in, in full disclosure, I know John Hall, he rents, uh, an office from it. And so I would see some of these things even when it wasn't discussed up here. Um, you know, but driving by the property, the only thing I would suggest, and, and Mr. Luger, you know this, that if, if we're going to be up here voting on a piece of property, the only thing I would ask is that, you know, when you, when we drive by there, typically you see a real estate sign or a coming soon sign. The only thing I would ask is if you, if we're voting on something, it should not have a political sign in the yard. And I'll close with that.
Scott, is it, this is not a gated community, is it?
No.
Okay.
No, it's supposed to be public streets.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. Councilman Parsons.
A couple's questions for Scott. What is there, uh, what's the subordinate or what's the ordinance for a street? Is it paving or is it concrete?
It's a either-or, either hot mix asphalt and concrete, but asphalt or concrete, the curving, concrete curving gutter sections.
Uh, is it time to talk about the tree ordinance or the common areas, park, or not?
So they submitted a tree conservation plan. It's just not on this particular rotation. The developer's aware of it, and there's no requirement to, uh, to run the tree conservation plan in tandem with the preliminary plat. We see it oftentimes, but it's not required by ordinance.
Okay. And then the common area or the park, the green space, that's also, like, parallel?
That's, uh, the green space that's denoted on this plat as common area, uh, is, uh, well, there is no green space. And for the park, public park dedications, we did talk about the park dedication requirements, and, uh, they have acknowledged, based on the number of living units or lots being created, uh, it's expected by this application that they'll pay the fee and move on.
Okay. Thanks.
Mayor.
Counselperson Myers.
I'm sorry, but I can't let that last statement from Counselperson Mobley go. Of course not. Because there are other council people sitting up here where their signs have been on that property. Am I right?
Not when it's being voted on.
Okay, counsel, stay on the agenda item here, and that's, uh, it's not on the agenda right now, so listen.
No, it's not.
Counsel, any more questions or concerns? Well, if not, and Scott, uh, we do need to vote on the variances first. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
So we'll have to vote on, counsel, we'll have to vote on the variances, and then if, uh, depending on what happens with the variances, we'll vote on the preliminary plat. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said variances.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Allen.
If we vote on this variances the way they are, then they would have to have a, a emergency exit, right? Or not?
The way the motion was worded, sir, it says approval of the variance. It's not a conditional approval.
Yeah. And, like our city manager noted, it's kind of up to them. I mean, it's not up to us.
Exactly. Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, no problem.
So I have a motion and a second. Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Counselperson Myers?
Aye.
The variances are approved, as said. Next, we entertain the, uh, a motion to approve the preliminary plat, as said.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Couch. Counsel, any more discussion on the preliminary plat, as stated? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Counselperson Myers?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
That preliminary plat is approved. Gary looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you. Our next item is item number ten, to consider adopting Resolution seventeen sixteen. Chris, do you have a staff person to give us an update on this one?
I'm going to turn this over to, uh, Chris Hay, our engineer, and of course, Rick is here if you have some questions, and I'm here, and Keith Kendall's here. So we'll just let Chris run with it.
Thank you, counsel. Um, this agenda item is to, um, approve the final GMP three for the, um, C Mar Water Distribution System Project. As you recall, in January, the council approved a resolution authorizing, um, Pepper Lawson Water Works as the construction manager at risk for the Texas Water Development Board, uh, Distribution System Project. In February, uh, GMP one and two were approved in an amount just over eight million dollars. This GMP three proposal, which is a guaranteed maximum price proposal, number three, to serve as the final GMP for the project, um, in the amount of twelve million, uh, fifty thousand, um, to, to move forward and wrap up this project. Um, this includes all of the scope, the entire scope of the project, and, um, includes, um, some additional work, some changes from the original contract, um, to get to the twelve million, fifty thousand dollar, uh, mark. I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, for you at this time regarding, uh, the information presented to you.
I might also add something.
Our city manager, Chris Coffin, he's got something he wants to add to it.
I would also like to add that this keeps us well under budget and that there's some savings by, uh, constraint that we're not able to bury that water line, uh, on Highway three seventy-seven through the lake at this time, because we don't know the layout of the, the bridge for the construction. And so we've opted to, at that point, go back with the twelve-inch pipe where it's currently attached and, um, and, and just run that up there. And then when we go to the five million gallon per day plant, hopefully Tech Dot will have an idea of where they're going to have their footprint for their new bridge expansion there, and we'll know where to bury that pipeline when we do that, and we'll do that at that time. So there's a, little cost savings by hanging that twelve-inch line on the existing bridge that we're experiencing, and that helps us stay under, well under budget as well.
Will, will there still be enough water for, say, Knox Ranch?
If, if you'll remember, um, that was an option that we were looking at, and for phase one, it, it's adequate for our plant the way it is. So when we go to phase two, we definitely need that twenty-inch line back across the river or the lake.
It's on at the bridge. It's twelve inch, right?
Yes.
Twenty, that's twenties and the rest of it.
Twenty inch, and it chokes down to twelve just at the bridge. And we'll put up a new ductile iron pipe there where the other one is. It's been replaced with a eight-inch PVC that you, you saw that day. So we'll have a new, uh, structure across that bridge. And then when we upgrade our plant for the five million gallons per day, we'll need to definitely put that in at twenty inch at that time.
What happens if, if Knox Ranch come online before then?
Well, then we'd have to move forward.
You'd have to do it anyway, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I think, I think as incremental as they're talking about coming, we've got plenty of-
We've got plenty of time, and that's a smart move. Thank you.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Are, were you done yet? I'm sorry.
I don't have anything else to add. I'll, I'll just-
Okay, I'm sorry.
All righty.
Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for our city engineer?
And we did, we did transfer some of the cost of, uh, the outline of the saltwater treatment plant to this, too, right?
Yes. That, that was, um, well, no, we, we're, from what I understand, we funded the, uh, the outfall or the decant line through this. We just had to get a different contractor approved for these funds.
Yes, there, there was a hundred and eight thousand dollars-
We saved money.
A hundred and eight thousand dollars was allocated from this project, um, the funding for this project to, for Pepper Lawson to construct the outfall line for the water treatment plant.
So that's what changed. And then that saved us quite a bit of money. I think it was about eighty thousand dollars savings, I realize, and the other contractor.
It was al, it was also a time, a time factor.
Time, right.
Saved time and money, um, doing it that way.
And I would like to brag on, uh, Chris and his team. They've done an exceptional job working with us to facilitate this being done quickly and on time within budget. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions or concerns on item number ten? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Resolution authorizing Pepper Lawson Water Works LLC to proceed with construction services, uh, the GMP proposal three for the City of Granbury Water Distribution System.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving right along now, we're going to have a presentation by our own Teresa Anderson on the Visit Granbury Corporation, on the physical year-end report and campaign's overview. Sorry. I think, uh, counsel, you did have a packet, and I know she didn't expect you to read all that before the council meeting, but, uh, I believe it was in your box or you have it now in front of you, so. Teresa?
Thank you very much. Nice, uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, city manager. I don't intend to go through the entire document for you. What I'd like to do instead is share with you some of the highlights of our major successes for the year. And, I'm trying to get my clip. I've talked a little bit about, uh, some programs and packaging and some advertising we have going on right now. So first, I just wanted to say thank you again for allowing us, Visit Granbury, to be part of the city of Granbury as far as having our space here. We enjoy our city colleagues, and we enjoy being part of the middle of things. We, uh, continue to work in a manner that is a strategic one. We continue to have our core focus that is those three elements of, uh, drive new and/or incremental visitor demand, enhance the visitor experience, and have a, a really, a successful, uh, organization. We, I'm going to go forward a little bit here, those are strategic goals. I want to share with you some things that relate to our new branded marketing materials and our new brand, uh, marketing initiatives. We've redone all of our, and as we continue to do new visitor materials, we have the- We've redone all of our, and as we continue to do new visitor materials, we have the new look with the new brand, with it, with the new logo styling, the new color palette, and even the new wording, and those four pillars of communication that I shared with you the last time I was here, I think it was back in June. So we can, we're starting to integrate all of those elements into anything that we do and anything that we produce for Granberry. We also have, uh, a partnership that, with the city, with the Parks and Recreation Department, with Aaron and his team, and you have this fabulous, we call it the hike and bike trail, the moments in time. And we've developed a map, and now that you have completed the trail, we updated the map. It'll be on our website soon, but, and we took that map and we made it a three-panel brochure, and in your packet I gave an example for you, and, um, I will say today, we had a lovely young woman come into the visitor center. She's in a wheelchair, she wanted a place that she could go be and be in nature, we gave her the brochure, she was thrilled, she, we saw her, she left the building, she went around, she spent time in the park. After, you know, an hour or so, she came back, and she came back in, and she was thrilled with the map. It showed her where she could go and where she could be, it was accessible for her, she had a great afternoon. So, we see so many families, you know, our, my office is there, so I can see out the window, and I see so many young families, people walking their dogs, pushing their strollers, pulling the wagons, folks with wheelchairs, mobility issues with our senior citizens, enjoying that park and enjoying the trail. So we're happy to, to be in partnership with you to provide these brochures, and when you open it up, you have the map, and even some indicators of where some of the key things are, as far as where you can go on the trails, where Memorial Lane is, and that information. So, we're happy to provide that and be a good partner with the city. We've, uh, I wanna thank you all for the fabulous sidewalk project. I think it's kick butt, I love it. I enjoyed driving around the entire square until we needed to close it off a little bit to do some punchless things. But because it has taken a while, and because our businesses need an influx of people, and also an influx of cash, we're putting on a party, it's just a celebration, it's simple, simple. We've asked the restaurants to put out some snacks, we've asked the businesses to put out some snacks, we have, uh, Granberry Live's gonna, we're gonna have a live remote from Hank FM, then Granberry Live's bringing in the, the, uh, big band sounds that they do, and it's gonna be outside, you can do a little bit of dancing, so I wanna personally invite each and every one of you. I put the flyer, the, the ad that read in the newspaper in your packet, and so that was kind of an invitation, and I want you to know, I purposely put, put your names on there. I want these businesses, when you come Thursday night, and please come, to shake your hand and say thank you to you, because it's a fabulous opportunity for Granberry to look as good as it is. The sidewalks are beautiful, they're easy to navigate, they're safe, the streets look great. So, I wanna thank you for that, and I wanna look forward to seeing all of you Thursday night, starts at four, ends at seven, or however long you wanna stay on the square, 'cause I'm gonna be there till the dancing stops. Not that I'm gonna dance, but until it stops. I wanted to share with you some of our successes as well, so we have, um, a really successful earned media program. Our goal is a million dollars, however, we beat that goal by seventy-eight percent, because we have, we have exceeded in an incredible way, we're at one million seven hundred thousand dollars plus of media value that we have gotten to, and that, that's, it gives us a way to leverage the marketing dollars that Visit Granberry spends on actual advertising. And we'll give you another example of that, so we have our fabulous Harvest Moon Festival coming up this weekend, we have a lot of things happening in our community this weekend, it's just a great time for people, local people to be here and come out and about, and our visitors to come. We've started some radio advertising this week saying, "The dust has settled, the streets are open." We're running some short spots to say, "Come to the Thursday night block party." We're running longer spots that are just basically, "Granberry is alive, it's open, it's dust-free, come enjoy, come shop." We're gonna run that all the way through the holidays, and then we have a short window here to run ads specific to the Harvest Moon Festival. But we also just found out that the, the gentleman who was here, the artist who does the sand sculpture who was here last year did that big pumpkin, remember it, over there by, uh, Granberry Square Plaza? Your queen Cortez is coming back, and he's gonna do a sand sculpture again. Well, we've been able, just this afternoon, to organize for him to be on the Fox Channel on Friday morning, starting at six-thirty. Took a little logistics, 'cause we gotta get him, he doesn't like to get up early. We needed a truck, and a truck full of sand. So, it's all coming together, I'm gonna pay for his hotel room Thursday night, 'cause he doesn't like to get up early on Friday. And that way, and Mary Lust, our PR person, is gonna be knocking at his door at whatever time she needs to, plus she's got a cellphone number, to get him to the studio, and throughout the morning, he's gonna build a sand sculpture. He's not the person who will talk about the event, the anchors will have their script, and they'll talk about the Harvest Moon, they'll talk about Granberry, they'll talk about the arts in Granberry. But he'll be there, and they'll, and they'll break away to him periodically as he does a sand sculpture. And then he starts his sculpture here, I believe, on Saturday, and it'll go out throughout the weekend, and he'll, it'll be here for a while. So we're looking forward to that. I have here some statistics for you that relate to social media, we are happy to share with you that we're up thirty-two percent on our Facebook, twenty percent on our Instagram, and about nine percent on Twitter. More women than men usually look at our social media profiles, and that's going detailing beautifully with all the work that we've done this year as well. We continue to post on an ongoing basis, multiple times a day sometimes, depending on the topics and the activity that we have happening, we do Facebook Live at least once a week, sometimes more, and we like to highlight local businesses, we like to highlight what's happening as it relates to activities and events in Granberry. We have a three-sixty camera that we, we utilize, we had the, uh, Corvettes here last weekend, we have GoPro, we have all the tools we need, and we utilize them on an ongoing basis for the social media. We had a twenty-seven percent increase in people coming into the visitor center over this last fiscal year. So that was a little over ten thousand people came into the visitor center, we don't count the ones that just go in to go to the restrooms, we count the ones that come in and talk to us about, so we can affect their, uh, the quality of their visitor experience by telling them more things as they can see and do while they're here. And I will tell you that we've enjoyed being in, in the city hall, and thank you for your generosity, but we're going to move. We just signed a lease for two spaces over in Granberry Square Plaza. The one space that's now occupied by Kayler Creek will be our visitor center, and the space behind, which is totally empty, and it mostly has, it's just two by, uh, studs now, we're gonna build that out, and those will be our administrative offices. So that's where we'll be moving forward, we're hoping for all that to happen just after the first of the year, January, February, something like that. But we'll miss our city hall friends. We do a lot of work in the digital space these days, that's more and more important all of the time, because it can be so targeted. And when we run a digital ad, we, and even with our website, they're pixelled. And when we run these ads, what we can do is, is we put like a, a code on a digital ad, and it puts a pixel on it, and so if, let's say you're using your smartphone, and you see one of these ads, and you end up clicking and you go through to our website, we can count that, and we're getting, uh, starting to build some good benchmarking information that shares with us, it puts a cookie on your phone, ha, we're tracking ya. And so, we're able to see how long it takes for a, a given group of folks to look at the website and then to book a hotel, because this tracks through, uh, major hotels, not B and Bs, and not Inns and things like that, more of the major flags, and, of which we have some here in Granberry. And so there was a timeframe we were looking at, that was the second calendar quarter of twenty-seventeen, and we found that it took folks five days from when they went to our website to when they booked a hotel. Then it took them twelve days to show up, so basically, it's a couple of weeks before they see an ad, they book a room, and they show up in Granberry. So, as we're able to track all this and build this good analytical information, it's gonna help us, because let's say next year it's Harvest Moon time, or it's holiday time, or it's a special event, or it's just a time that we could use an influx of people, we could, we'll be able to look at those analytics to say, "Okay, these are metroplex people, the folks that, that, uh, that looked at ads that we placed in the metroplex, and they usually travel here about two weeks out." So that tells us, three weeks out, we need to start a digital campaign, and we need to focus it in the metroplex, and we need to, and the messaging needs to be this and be that, so we're gonna try to look, just work harder and smarter with what we've got, because there are more and more tools available to us to be able to do that. We wanna drill down to the people who really wanna come to Granberry, and try to be better at tracking when they do come. And then, in time, we want to be able to get a better idea of the economic impact of them, because we'll get started on some economic impact studies. I have for you, you can see it on the screen, some of the digital ads, these are, these run on the web, and so these are some of the digital ads, and you'll see, I think, is it happening that the, uh, titles are changing a little bit, where it says, "Restore Yourself," can you see them changing? Anybody see them changing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's what they'll do when they're on the web, and people see them, it'll like, "Restore Your Spirit," or "Restore Your Curiosity," or "Restore Your Appetite," then it'll go to "Restore Yourself." And this is part of the brand messaging that we had developed for us late spring, that we're using for anything we have moving forward. It's gonna be on our new destination website that'll launch, launch after the first of the year, and this, and we're implementing it in everything that you see, and here's some other digital ads, different sizes, as you can see. Now, we did pull the one of the little girl on the beach, because it's getting a little chilly outside, but other than that, the others are still running. And when we are tracking them, we're finding that we're right at industry standard, if not just a little bit above, 'cause we send them out, and we wanna do what you call prospecting, and you just try to get people to see them, and it's a slow return, I mean, it's a small return for all the impressions that they get, but we're at about ten percent of the people who see these ads go to our website. Then you do what's called retargeting, so if someone has come to our website, we, we are able to track them and go back and, and retarget them, and, and put another message to them, to, and maybe the other message is something subtly different, 'cause we're continuing to talk about Granberry, and so we want them to be able to book. So we're doing our digital ads, you can hear some other examples for you as well. Again, with our color palette, those key images, the key words that we had developed through our branding process. Here's a horizontal, uh, web banner, and you can see they even change a little bit as well. We have some Facebook ads that we're running. Some more Facebook ads, you know, "Restore Yourself," "Restore Your," can't even read it, just, what, just "Restore." Connection, thank you, I didn't wear my glasses, I should've done that. And so, we have the Facebook, and you can see here an example of what the Face, one of them would look like, it was when it's on a smartphone and it's in someone's hand. This is an Instagram ad that ran, uh, concurrently with a print ad that we have in D Magazine, of course, over in the Dallas area, so this is the Instagram ad that's running for over there. And then we have, I don't know if you, any of you have been subject to any Canvas ads, they call them Canvas ads, and they're on your smartphone, and that's the only place you can see them, is on your smartphone, and I couldn't get the whole thing to come up, it just got music behind it, it's like a little video, and then you click on it, and you go deeper and deeper into it, and it gets into the different, uh, sections, 'cause you go deeper in, and it can go this way and that way, and the very last image, you can even move it with your finger, it's, to, almost like a virtual reality tour of, uh, looking at that photograph in, in a different way. So we've got those running as well. That's what I have, and I wanted to show you a, a video that we use in some of our Facebook advertising, and it tracked really very well. It's a little one-minute, and Rick's gonna pull it up for me. Ready?
Just minutes from the Dallas-Worthworth Metroplex is the most charming place in Texas. Renowned for its historic Granberry Square lined with boutiques, home decor shops, and eateries. Granberry boasts theater and music, a thriving art scene, and a full lineup of fun family events. Granberry is a virtual water playground with a sandy city beach, boating and skiing, fishing, and everything in between. Bring an appetite for all the sip and savory delights found throughout the area. We hope you come see what is uniquely Granberry.
This is a one-minute video that's had a variety of uses, we not only had it on the website for a while, we took it down and we used it in our Facebook advertising, and that, using video is really, really important these days, it's very common, and it's, it's real well sought out, and people really resonate with the video, so we're using it more frequently, and we'll be doing some smaller clips on things as we move forward. But I was able to use it when we had a group that was contemplating coming to Granberry to bring a conference to the Con, to the TRCC. And I sent it with a woman who's the meeting planner, who wanted it to come to Granberry, and I helped her, we did a PowerPoint, I did a PowerPoint for her on what the example of their group experience would be. I used photographs from the conference center, I used pictures of happenings and things, and shops, and theater, and music of the downtown area, pictures of the lake and city beach and all that, so I tried to create what the experience could be for this group if they came, and I gave her the one-minute video to take with her. They're coming, they're coming next year, so it was very useful, and Chris, you used it just recently, didn't you? For a group, were they already here?
No, it's a site visit for economic development, and, um, they've, they've narrowed us down to their number one site in Texas.
There we go, so anytime we've got tools available to help bring business, economic development, visiting friends and relatives, if we've got the tools, we're gonna share them, we're gonna lend them, and, because that's what it's all about, I think we're all in this super highway of six lanes, and we're all going in the same direction, there might be some double yellows in between, for some, but we're all going in the same direction, if we've got anything that can help with business development in any way, shape, or form, then we're here to be part of that. I can share with you, uh, you have it in your packet probably, but our hot tax, hotel occupancy tax is up about six percent for this particular fiscal year, and we, uh, have returned about seventy-two thousand dollars with our ninety-ten partnership, ninety percent of the hot comes to Visit Granberry for our marketing use and a marketing investment, ten percent returns back to the city, you've come back with, and it's, everything's not in yet, but about seventy-two thousand dollars so far. And you had allocated an investment of fifty thousand dollars from the general fund, so that you've got your fifty thousand back, plus some more. So we thank you for your support, we thank you for the partnership with the ninety-ten, and, uh, that's our plan to move forward for this fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, we've got great plans moving forward. We are looking forward to sharing all of it with you as we launch our projects and programs. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Teresa, council, has you got any questions or, uh, comments to Teresa?
Good job.
Councilman Allen?
Thank you.
Good job, I tell ya, uh, I wish to all of our departments, I know you're not a department of the city, we do give you our hot tax, very percent of it, which you're returning back to us, but I wish to all of our departments would give us like, uh, six months or whatever, report like you do to us, to tell us how it's going, where the money's going, it'd really help on some of our projects that we got here now, that we're losing a couple hundred thousand a year, year in, year out, that we might be able to stop that if we got a report like you just gave us, thank you.
Well, you're welcome, thank you for having me.
And your board of directors.
I'll thank them for you.
You wanna comment on that one, Mr. Coffin?
I'm not gonna touch that one with a ten-foot pole.
Council, any more, uh-
Why not? Go ahead, Mr. Coffin.
Councilman Parsons?
Oh, would you, would you, uh, spend a little time and talk to us a little bit about, uh, this was in the packet, the Off Square Initiative?
Yes, I will.
Tell us about that, what, what-
Well, I was contacted, and I guess there's been some conversation, some sentiment, some concern, or just talking over a cup of coffee, that maybe Visit Granberry was only investing their time in marketing on the, with businesses on the square. And that's not true. The square is very important to tourism in Granberry, the lake is very important, we have studies that show how it ranks, you know, the functional elements and the emotional elements of these visitor experience, and the square is very, very important, so that's the center- So that's the center of our community. That steeple out there, that courthouse is the very center of our community. We talk about it. It's important people recognize it. But we also market and try to assist all of our businesses, what I consider tourism businesses, in, in the city of Granbury. We go further afield than that. We talk about what's happening in Bluffdale, we talk about Fossil Rim, because a visitor does not know when they stop, when they enter the city limits. They just don't know, nor do they care. We want the visitor to have a quality experience and if that means them going to Wilfong's for a couple of hours on a Saturday to have some of their fabulous food and that atmosphere, that's fine because you know what? It's a hub and spoke. They have to hub here. They have to stay here. They can't stay in Bluffdale. I don't think you stay anywhere, sleep in your car maybe, but you're going overnight in Granbury. And then we want to push them out to have these quality experiences and then bring them back. Bring them back at night for theater, bring them back at night for dining, nighttime dining, bring them back for their hotel room. And then have a reason to overnight so we get them again the next morning for some breakfast somewhere or another experience that they take advantage of before they leave. But I wanted it to be listed for you to see, we do indeed market visitor, businesses of interest to visitors other than just the square.
Thanks.
Councilman Couch?
Well, Teresa, you continue to be awesome.
Thank you.
And the, the tools that you've implemented on how to reach that, that tourist is really powerful. And I know, given the new software that's coming, it's even going to get more powerful. So, thank you so much for doing that. And also, I want to recognize Councilmember Myers for, you know, initiating this, this effort because it's, it's a large, difficult road that's been traveled and now we're starting to reap the, the work of this. One more thing is that our merchants on the square have paid a price for the construction that has gone on for the last seven, eight months. So I'm asking everyone to tell everybody about the party on Thursday night. We need to really support our merchants and please, please tell your neighbors. Thanks.
Counsel? Counsel, Herschel Meyer?
I always come to this, thank you so much. I am honored to continue to serve on your board and we've got an amazing board. I hadn't seen this new digital advertising that changes and that's pretty incredible. So, people don't realize how difficult it was for us to come up with a new brand because some didn't like orange and some didn't like blue. And the vision that you have and the vision that everybody brought together to come up with this new brand is just extraordinary. So, again, Teresa, thank you. One thing that we didn't recognize is the fact that we recruited you here temporary and you fell in love with Granbury and now have purchased and made this your home.
I registered to vote. I don't have a Texas driver's license yet, but I'll get that next week.
So, welcome to Granbury as a resident and thank you for your commitment and thank you for giving our community and giving me a chance. I'm honored to call you a friend and I'm, I'm blessed that, we're all blessed that you're going to stay. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm blessed to be here as well. I just felt like I was going to be in my career and, you know, I'm moving from a house I've lived in for 32 years, raised my family there, all that. So, it took a lot of thought for me to even decide that there was another way. And, you know, I remember talking to my son about it, I was like, oh my gosh, I think I'm making a mistake, honey. And he's like, Mom, this is your time. You always said, there will be a time when a door will open for you and you will walk through it. He said, do I have to kick you a little bit to get you through the door? Are you just going to go on your own? Because this is what you need to do and this is where you need to go. So he was a real deciding factor too. And my husband, Don, who totally loves Granbury, and he used to say to me when I'd call him, when I first came, it'll be two years in November, and I'd call him and say, this is a great place, these are great people, I'm kind of tired because Diane Hedges is dragging me everywhere and I'm meeting all these people, but it's just a great, great place, it's just a great place. And after about three or four weeks I hadn't, hadn't been together and he's like, oh my gosh, you're falling in love with those people. I said, no, I'm not. It's temporary. It's 90 days and I'll be home. No, I think you're falling in love with those people, you've got to watch it. You just can't be falling in love with those people. Well, I did. And here I am and we are trying to sell our home and we bought a place here and we're settled and we feel like we're part of the hood, so to speak, and we're part of the work that we're looking forward to being Texans, I guess, we'll be Texans, once I get that driver's license. Thank you all. It's an honor to work in Granbury. It's an honor to be your CEO for Visit Granbury and I'm looking forward to many, many more years and many, many more times in front of you to talk about the good work that we do.
Hey, Teresa. Teresa, I got a question for you.
Yes.
Hey, did, did we, did you attend the, the travel event, the summit in Arlington? Did anybody go to that one?
I did.
Because I didn't see them on the list or anything.
Yes, I attended the TTIA Tourism Summit and represented Granbury there and met, you know, of course, my, what I call my tourism colleagues there, my Texas tourism colleagues. They had some interesting awards. It's the first time I'd ever met Jerry Brown from Dallas Cowboys. He's a great speaker, he got an award. And so, yeah, I was there. I represented Granbury as best I could.
Okay, great.
Talked about the opening that we have at the visitor center.
Great, because I didn't see it on your list here and I didn't see it on their website and so I thought, where? Why aren't we represented? Why don't we have a little flag that says Granbury was there? Because that's real close to home.
Granbury was there.
Okay.
I was there.
Everybody knows that, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for being there.
Thank you.
All right, Counsel, no action on that, just a lot of information there from Teresa. Thank you again, Teresa, for that update. Our next item is item number 12 to consider adopting ordinance 1763 amending Article 1 of the City of Granbury Texas Code of Ordinance, providing for additional section 1.11, Division 1 allegations of misconduct against members of city council. As you remember, Counsel, this one was tabled at our last meeting. Charlie is not, Charlie Zech won't be with us tonight to give us an update, but he has sent the update in the packets. I'm going to kind of turn this over to our own attorney. He's kind of enlightened me on some procedures that we probably didn't do properly on the last meeting, or maybe we did, but it's to kind of let you know where we're at as far as the way we tabled it. So, if we could, Jeremy?
The, the issues are strictly procedural, parliamentary procedure issues. We do not have anything in our charter or our rules of procedure regarding tabling, but what we do have is under 7.10 that basically says if we, if we don't have something specific on point, then we will rely to the best of our knowledge on parliamentary procedure. So, what we have tonight is an issue that we have put on the deliberation agenda, this consideration for adopting this ordinance. However, that would be old business that, once we agreed to vote for and confirm the minutes of the last meeting before we went into the new business, someone should have made a motion to take from the table that item for discussion. And since that was not done, that, that ordinance has died. So, what we have in effect here now is a new ordinance for consideration tonight, brand new.
The, so what you're saying is at the beginning of this meeting?
That's right.
We should have?
We should have either taken it up then by removing it from the table, someone making a motion, getting a second, and taking a majority vote. Or, someone should have made a motion to suspend the rules in accordance with our policies and our charter, which could have been done as well, to take that, that motion up later. And since we didn't do that, effectively, we've killed that motion. So, we now have a new motion that either can be debated and, and voted on?
A new motion?
As it is, this, this new ordinance, rather than taking, the, the old ordinance is dead. From the last meeting, that's dead. So, what we've done is we've agendized as this is a new item. So we can either vote on it, we can table it, we can postpone it to a definite time, which is actually what should have been done last time, rather than tabling it, it should have been postponed definitely in compliance with the rules of parliamentary procedure. We can postpone it to an indefinite time, which virtually is the result of killing it, or, or vote on it. But it is, it is, it is as if it is a brand-new agenda item, not the same item that was discussed at the last meeting. So those are the options.
So what you're saying on the consent agenda in item number one, consider approving city council meeting minutes of October 2nd?
That's right.
We should have read into that and, and removed or, or identified the tabling of that item?
That's right. Because what we should have done is-
Because now we've approved it.
We should have followed the order of business, which requires us to take up unfinished business prior to new business.
Well, we certainly didn't do that last meeting whenever I brought up the fact that there were two tabled items.
We've never done-
And I'm not sure I understand why you would wait till this point in time to tell us about this new procedure because we've been tabling and considering items for a lot longer than you've been here, so.
That, that's right, a lot longer than I've been here. So as I'm acclimating myself, I'm going through all of our ordinances, all of our policies, all of our charter and trying to get us caught up-
Where were you last, where were you last council meeting when we tabled an item? Or when I brought up the fact that we had tabled an item and one of them wasn't on the agenda, but you went ahead and let us consider the table item?
That's right.
That time.
Because if, if it was removed from the table, it doesn't have to be on the agenda. A tabled item can be brought up later at that meeting or at the subsequent meeting regardless of being agendized.
Well, it was a, it was an item that was on the agenda that had been tabled at the previous meeting. And you're saying now that would have been a, an incorrect, incorrect procedure?
Procedure.
It would have been. Well, then we've been incorrect for what, 78 years?
A long time, ever since I've been on here.
Quite, quite some time, yes. And we're just trying to correct all of that.
I would certainly submit that I don't appreciate your waiting till we're into this meeting to bring this item. So thank you for that. All right, so now what are we considering now? Is this the ordinance that Charlie sent to us?
What we're going to be considering now is, is actually a, a new, it's a blanketed or new deliberation agenda. And yes, it is what Charlie has modified and changed on the, at the request of the council.
Okay.
So, basically, we're, basically, we're going to go into a new-
That's the one that's in our packet?
Yes, yes. And going forward, if you feel uncomfortable with Charlie not being here, and we did table it, now we know what the procedure is, that we would have to follow the guidelines according to our attorney here. And so, or, we can go ahead and read into this deliberation agenda item here, questions, concerns, and then vote on it.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
I just have a question for the attorney.
Okay.
We're not violating Open Meetings Act here, are we?
No.
Chris, I think Chris wants to put something to?
I talked to Mr. Zech last week and he told me that he was not going to be able to be here because he's scheduled to be with his partners at the International City Attorney Conference. And so, he, he's willing to come back at another meeting, but I said, well, please send the updated ordinance. He said he had the changes, the issue regarding council member responsibilities that you requested. He looked through statutes, all kinds of, of formal documents, looking for a description of council member duties and there are none.
All right.
And so, he, he was hesitant to put that in there, put something in there, knowing that there's no foundation for that. And so, he left that out. And so, what this is, is what we requested him to provide were, was a process in which to carry out official misconduct accusations in our charter. Nothing more, nothing less. And I know that there's been some headline in the newspaper, even to the surprise of council member Mobley, about an ethics ordinance. And I would recommend that we, we move forward with that if you so desire with our own attorney to work on that at a future date for later presentation. But tonight, we're simply focusing on the process to carry out an accusation of official misconduct as listed in our city charter. And that's all this ordinance provides.
And, and that's what Charlie has sent us here to look over and I'm sure the council has looked this over many, many times. So, I guess what we'll direct, if you have questions, direct them to the attorney or myself, or Chris, had talked to him also. So we'll do what we can to answer any questions if there are any.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
Yes, well, I've read the, the ordinance and again, we, we needed this. So I appreciate those that put this together. The, the only issue I have with this, and I'm, I take this very seriously, is that I believe that for someone to bring somebody up on official misconduct, and in order not to abuse this power, I think I should take two council members to do so. So if we decide we'd like to pass this tonight, I would like to, you know, make that amendment or however we would need to do that.
We could do that. I mean, most of these things we had here, we wanted Charlie to go back and look at them and rewrite them, but I'm sure that something as simple as that, we could make that in that and write it. Chris?
Based on the ordinance, it states that there will, the complainants will not participate in the deliberation. And so if you have two people making an accusation against one person, you're going to end up with three people deliberating on that matter. And it takes three votes to affect that. It takes four votes based on our charter to affect the change. So you would-
Well, the ordinance has four votes. They have one left. The ordinance says four votes.
Right. And so, you would need, you, you wouldn't be able to, to do that.
Actually, it pulled three of us out of that because one would be the accused.
Right. So there'd be three left to vote and that's not enough to, to take care of business. And that's why Charlie limited it to one.
Okay.
And I agree with you, it needs to be an egregious situation.
Counsel, any more questions, concern? Councilman Mobley?
Thanks for getting my name right.
I'm working on it real hard.
The, I, I sent an email to Mr. Zech asking for this to have more teeth in it than it did, to cover ethics, to cover behavior, to cover duty. Basically, his, his point with me was, he was directed to do this. He gave us exactly what he was asked to do. I think this is the first step in, in one of several steps to make sure that we're held accountable. You know, I find it, it mind-boggling that most, well, every major corporation in the world has a code of conduct, a code of ethics. And even the city of Granbury has a code of, rules of conduct. And yet, we're not held to the same standards. And I think as elected officials, we need to be held to those standards even higher. And, and that's why it amazes me, there's nothing in place. And, and the argument can be, well, no city, no city in the state does. Well, Teresa, thanks for setting our city apart from others because I think you've done a fantastic job. And I would like to set us apart in this with ethics. Because if we can't look our voters in the face and say yes and no, and then be able to check on us with transparency, then what are we doing up here, folks? And that's what this is all about. It's not about going after or having it in for some, it's none of that. But it's a way to set ourselves apart and to hold us to a higher standard. And for everybody to see the process. So, that's what I would, I would love to make a motion on this and as presented, but also knowing that this, there's going to be another step to this with conduct and ethics because I think that's imperative. Because this just gives us a process. This gives us a process of what to do when something happens or if something happens. In the unlikely event, somebody misbehaves. But we have, we have to lay down what is acceptable. Because for every person, it'll be different. But like I said, I think we need to be held to a higher standard. And this is step one. And I think, yes, we can set ourselves apart, just like Visit Granbury. And I don't think that's a bad thing in this situation. So, that, that's my two cents worth on that. And we can giggle and we can snicker about what's said in the paper. Yes, I was surprised. I asked, I had to be left out of the paper for a while and was surprised. You can laugh all you want, Mr. Cruz, but I had to be left out of the paper.
I wouldn't laugh in a doubt. Okay, Counsel? So, my name is- Counsel, Councilman Allen, Councilman Allen. Counsel, Councilman Allen, Councilman Allen, Councilman Mobley, finish it up.
Okay. So, what I'd like to do is set ourselves apart on the ethics side, in addition to the Visit Granbury side. And I would hope this council would have the same enthusiasm to support something like this going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think that if council members understand the expectation of how they behave, I think that's, you know, a good idea. And what I thought that we might consider at some point is taking an oath to that effect. I did a lot of research on this, and it's hard to find public officials and ethics. But one thing I found, as far as an oath, says this, "A public official shall be accountable to the people and shall discharge their duties with utmost responsibility, integrity, competence, and loyalty. Act with patriotism and justice. Lead modest lives and uphold public interest over personal interest." And, you know, taking an oath to that effect, I think, would be a good idea.
More comments, counsel?
Well, I would certainly support a dialogue and a discussion about ethics, and the professions that I belong to have codes of ethics, and we comply with those. So, somebody get it on the schedule, whether we have to have Charlie here, he's never mentioned ethics, as a matter of fact.
Actually, after talking, I think he's, actually, our own attorney could do that for us, so.
Oh, okay.
I would say get it out.
Start to work on it.
May do that.
In my research, what, I found two cities that had it. And the only thing that's in the state is code 171, 176. That's primarily relating to elections and/or to the conflict of interest. So, there's not anything in the state code that talks about ethics for elected officials. So, I would welcome the opportunity to look at it.
Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Parsons. Councilperson Myers.
I wanted just to add, I believe that when we were talking to the attorney, we mentioned, or I mentioned, how many cities had this in their charter, and he said he didn't recall any, but now we do know there are at least two. I believe at least one of those cities has an independent board, or some type of board, that would be called upon if this goes to official misconduct. It's just my opinion that I feel that this council should not be judge, jury, and sentenceor without an independent board that is placed or called upon like a jury to make those decisions, because I feel very strongly that I do not want to be a part of taking away the voter process. And that is what we would be doing if we remove an elected official, is they were voted into this office, and we as a council, I mean, that is what the Constitution is about, whether it's a city council member or whether it's a president, that they are, they are voted in by the people, and the people, that's why you have a recall vote. So, if we're going to do this, I feel like we should at least explore the option to have an independent board of so many people, I don't know if it's six or seven or whatever, that doesn't burden this council to remove one of their members. So, I would like for us to at least consider that.
Go ahead, Chris. Chris wants to...
You know, Councilmember Myers, I agree with you, and, but our charter says, "The city council shall be the judge of the election and qualifications of its own members and of the mayor, and for such purpose she'll have the power." And it talks about subpoenaing production records, and the decision of the council shall, as soon as practical after regular or special election, either at a call meeting or said council, that call purpose next meeting. In other words, put them into office. And so, you have that responsibility when they're elected, to make sure that that person is qualified. And if the elect, if the voters did not provide you a qualified candidate, you have the right to say, "No, this person is not qualified," and say, "Why?" And that's an inherent ability that we have in our charter for y'all. And so, for you to take that responsibility, give it to a committee, we'd probably need to adjust this charter as well.
And I'm agreeable to that, because the whole reason why all this got brought up in the very beginning was because we had an issue with a city official or a city secretary raise, and the last thing that I wanted to do was vote off our mayor. So, I believe that it's important for us to think of a different way that we can approach this. If other cities have independent boards that, that review the misconduct or the allegation, then if we need to change our charter where we're not having to vote off one of our own, I just, I feel very uncomfortable doing that, because they were voted on by the people, and the people should take them off.
And I will say that Charlie has put in this, in this ordinance several times, which makes it a little closer to what you're saying, Councilperson Myers, with the, where it has to be at an open meeting and the city, it has to have several hearings, and...
But we ultimately make the decision.
We do.
And I feel that that is, that's, that's something no other city in this state does. Why should we bring that to Granbury?
They do do it in the city of Bryan, in the city of Bel Air. I know those two are fact, there's probably plenty more that have provisions for council kicking folks off. They don't have provisions for how to do it.
But it's not even...
That's the difference.
Well, I don't like the provision of how to do it, but that's just my opinion.
And the recall petition is certainly available to citizens at all times. And as he said, the only city that's ever done this, that he's aware of, where they kick someone off, every council member was recalled the next time.
Why? So, why do we want to go there?
And so, you need to be careful how you vote, when you vote. And it would have to be a unanimous vote if it was, if it requires four votes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons, is that who I'm...
As I understand it, actually, the city manager could bring official misconduct charges too. So, I don't know whether that would go through. But understand, understand that the official misconduct, one of the explicit definitions in the charter says that for any member of the city council to direct a subordinate of the city manager to do, to take an action is official misconduct. That particular part of the charter is, seems onerous, in that official misconduct from that point is booted off the council instantly. That seems onerous, that seems wrong, but can you imagine the dysfunction that exists in a city that would have six of us telling the city manager's employees what to do? In the last instance, I think we had someone go to the human resources director and direct him to give a raise to an employee of the city. In that case, you had an individual member of council telling a subordinate of the city manager what to do, and also authorizing expenditures of funds. I don't know of any instance in which we want an individual person telling or allowing or making expenditures of city funds without council approval. This council exists only as a body. The individuals within this council have no power, no authority to bind or to cause the city to take any action. The actions are only inside of this body. And for us to allow single member or whatever to conduct business outside of that body, such as writing an email to our attorney and saying, "I want to include this on the next one." The attorney was smart. He says, "No, I can't do that. That's not my job. That's not what I've been hired to do." So, anyway, it's my opinion that the framers of the charter understand explicitly that to allow any member of the board to interfere in the city manager's business is a welcome to chaos. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say something.
Councilman Allen.
It was not me, folks. I'm clear on those two items he just talked about. It was not me. Never have and never will direct an employee of our city other than our city manager. That'd only be through me.
Any more comments, counsel?
Mayor, I just want to re...
Councilman Couch.
I'd just like to reconfirm, I read it, I just want to reconfirm with the attorney that when it comes to options for official misconduct, that there are other options besides removal. What are you reading now? It's actually quite kind of vague, but 11, at one point, it's 014, 11009014.
After debate, the city council may, by motion and majority vote, take any action it deems necessary, including, but not limited to the following.
Any action it deems, whether that be a private sanction, a public sanction, or anything from this list. This list is not all-inclusive, you're not limited to...
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
Any more discussion, counsel? Well, if not, I'll entertain a motion to have a motion out there.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance numbers 17063, dealing with official misconduct and the procedures for such.
Second.
So, we have a motion to go ahead and to approve the ordinance that has been prepared by Charlie Zech, of course.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote? Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
That ordinance is approved. We're now going to our executive session. I'll declare that the city of Granbury council is convened in an open session, and all the members are present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with authority contained in the following section, section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. The council is now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. Counsel, if you, if we'd like, we'd like to go back to item number seven and eight that was on the consent agenda. We've had an opportunity to talk about those. Item number seven was to consider awarding a public management corporation the grant administration contract for the 2017 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application and Project Administration. Counselors, any more, is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Kaufman on that item?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we award that public management, Inc., the grant administration contract for the 2017 Texas Capital Fund.
Thank you, Councilperson. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilman Allen? Is there any more discussion on that one, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. That one is approved. The next one was item number eight, consider awarding Strand the engineering contract for the 2017 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application and Project Engineering. Counselors, are there any questions or concerns that we could...
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we award Strand the engineering contract for the 2017 Texas Capital Fund Grant Application and Project Engineering.
Very good. We have a motion by Councilman Parsons. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Councilperson Myers? Any more discussion on that one, counsel? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That one is also approved. Counsel, that ends the council meeting. Is there any more discussion or concerns of any other items? If not, the council meeting is adjourned.